June 21st, regular meeting for the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. To start, we are going to go into a short non-public. So I am going to make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91- A colon 3, number 2, number 3. Discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. And we need a roll call vote, and we also need a second to start. Matt, second? And we need a roll call vote, starting?
Brian Cisneros, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Denise Day, yes?
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes?
Gianna Jelcy, yes.
Okay, we're going to go into the music room. Going to declare us back in public. And the first order of business on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Gianna, can I have a second? Tom? Any changes or discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor. Public comments? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak this evening? Okay. Approval of the minutes. Have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for June 7th? Gianna? A second? Heather? Any changes to the minutes? Yes, Gianna?
I've got an addition that I sent to Karen. This is on page 6 of 7, the paragraph starting NHSBA resolutions. To add, Gianna Jelcy proposed writing a resolution to address 2021's NHHB 2, sections 297, 298, which was known as the divisive concepts law. The statute's in our RSA 354A, paragraphs 31, 34. The school board previously released a position paper on this due to the potentially chilling effect on the ability to teach certain subjects. The board voted in favor of drafting a resolution, 7 to 0. Student rep in favor.
Gianna, you said Karen has that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other corrections? I have one, also on page 6, at the very top, where it says Denise announces substitution of the word misuse for abuse in the second paragraph. Just to add, to clarify, that that's the second paragraph of policy IHAMA. Any other changes? Okay? Yes, Karen has that. Okay. All in favor of the minutes as amended? Seven in favor. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? None this evening? Okay. From the board? Heather?
So Matt, Tom, and I all attended graduation. And even with the quick change in venue, it was a very lovely ceremony. Student speeches were fabulous. And it was really nice. And I really do love going to graduation. It's just such a joyful event. And it was well-produced. And so congratulations to all the students and to all the staff who worked behind the scenes to make that happen.
Any other? Gianna?
Got a question regarding that. Has there been any thought to actually trying to make that more along the lines of a permanent venue as opposed to the school grounds?
Thanks, Gianna, for that. So over the years, we've gone back and forth to the Whittamore. The students would love to keep graduation outdoors. And there's always the chance that it's going to rain like happened this year. So the first, our first goal is to try to create a graduation that's student-centered and driven by what their desires are. And then when that can't happen, we can flip to the wet. I think this year, the 48-hour switch was a bit sudden. And I think that having it as a backup and finding out what the university would charge us to have it as a backup as opposed to be, you know, absolute, because the kids really, really want to be outdoors.
Any other board comments? Okay. District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Before I have Rachel come up to present, I would like to just inform everyone that we've had two incredible days of teacher workshops. We've had professional development happening, variety of different activities, Eureka Squared, professional development for K through 5. We've had CPI training. Tomorrow, we'll have some UDL training that Rachel's involved with that she'll be presenting to the middle school faculty. And there's other trainings also that have been occurring over these past two days and will continue for the next two days. We've also had K-12 curriculum work, variety of departments, including the counseling department. I've worked with the full K-12 counseling department for the past two days on curriculum. And health department met, P, physical education department met, art, music. Again, many different groups have been meeting. So we're really pleased with the work the faculty have had the opportunity to do over these last few days. And we're really excited to continue that into Thursday and Friday as well. I also just wanted to inform everyone that reach is ready to go. We have four weeks of reach. It's starting on July 10th. We have about 90 to 100 kids a week involved. They'll be in the middle school, and they'll be joining summer school and ESY here in the middle school. So we're very excited about that. And again, it starts on July 10th, and it's four weeks. So I think it's August 4th is the last day. Have any questions? Great, so I'd invite Rachel.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, DIJ Coordinator for the District. Oh, I don't think I pressed the right one. Or did I? Great. Awesome. So I will just be going over how the full year has went. I also did like an end-of-semester update for you all and also went over the professional development plan for teachers. And so we'll get into some of those evaluations and the feedback today, as well as kind of where I'm landing at for the rest of the goals, so. So just as a reminder, here is an overview of the spring semester goals that I brought forth at the beginning of the semester. So continuing to convene and facilitate the superintendent's DIJ community group and steering committee, coordinating and overseeing the Spring 2023 visit with Tona Brown, updating the transgender and gender expression policy procedure, developing some working draft DIJ competencies that will hopefully continue to be refined throughout the 2023-24 school year, and then creating a teacher DIJ professional development plan and designing and implementing all of those workshops. So touching on the first goal. We, as a DIJ community group, we got to meet five times this semester. I noticed that I think there's been some shifting dynamics in direction of the group, particularly since I'm new in the position. And I think the DIJ community group prior to my role being created has done a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of pushing a lot of this work forward, particularly on an institutional level. And I think now that I'm in this role, I'm working with different partners or different folks in the community group on different projects, but maybe not as a whole were we able to maybe push certain action items forward. And so for next year, I'm really looking forward to focusing on that community piece, right? So I'm really invested in thinking about community programming, community education. And I think the DIJ community group would be a great space to really plan those and implement those within our district. And so I'm really excited to plan for that next year. So this was a great event. It was like a year-long planning. I was kind of put in the position to help spearhead it like the second week of my role. So it was a long time coming, and I'm really happy with the results. And I know that it was just a really meaningful experience for folks in the community and for a lot of our students. So as a reminder, we got to invite an internationally renowned artist who was also the first Black trans woman to perform for a sitting president and at Carnegie Hall. So that is Tona there. And she practiced and performed with all of our orchestra students for an evening concert, held a high school and middle school meet and greet for students, and the high school one was actually being led by our high school Jedi group, which I noticed page is no longer here. So sad. And we also got to partner with UNH, and they did their own program where they facilitated an interview discussion with Tona and then a follow-up Q and A. And then I just really want to say, I think it was a really pivotal moment for the community and for our BIPOC and our LGBTQIA+ students. The questions that the students asked were just like super meaningful. They were really engaged, and it was just an amazing opportunity. So moving into the transgender procedure update committee. So this is something that I've been working on pretty much all semester, and we've had numerous meetings. And so I've been working with a counselor representative from each school along with the Jedi student group to draft basically a new procedure document from scratch to reflect the goals of the updated policy, right? So the updated transgender and gender expression policy was updated because, you know, it was a really great policy at the time. But I think with the shifting of language and trying to be a bit more fluid to encompass more of the identities within that group and to be more inclusive, you know, we want our procedural elements to also align as well. So, yes. We, the Jedi group, developed a student feedback survey that unfortunately wasn't finalized until the end of this semester. So I'm hoping that we can find some avenues to share that at the beginning of next semester to get some more student feedback. And then also adapting the survey questions to gather feedback from teachers will be really helpful. So we're just kind of writing right now, and then we're going to be cutting and editing and all those things, particularly based on the feedback. So I'm really hoping to have a finalized draft for you all or to share some updates about it by the end of next semester. So I'm really hopeful about that. Next, our DIJ competency work. So this is actually a key part of the DIJ strategic plan that unfortunately we just haven't been able to start yet. And so this has also been a focus this semester that I've been trying to work on. So I'm currently working with New Hampshire Listens on research and a literature review. So we're reviewing things from learning for justice, the Bayley framework, teaching tolerance, other school districts, and higher ed competencies to see kind of what's out there and what would make sense maybe within our own district. I'm hopeful to draft the competencies that work with and mirror our SEL Castle model. So I really like that model. And when we think about SEL, a lot of those components actually align with DIJ. And so if we can craft something that kind of mirrors and works with SEL, I think it would also be really helpful with teachers as well in thinking about how to adopt them and how to engrain it in the work. So this is going to be just kind of overarching competencies. We're not going to have like, by this age, they need to come out with this. So it's just going to be some useful examples and strategies for teachers to hopefully adopt within their classroom. I'm going to gather a focus group of teachers to test and implement the draft competencies to gather feedback. So I'm really, we need the teacher input, right? They're going to be the ones that are going to be using it and reviewing it. And so I would love a group of teachers to kind of adopt those draft competencies. And then after a period of time, we all come back together, see what worked, what didn't really align, what was helpful, what wasn't. And so then by the end of next year, I'm really, I'm really excited to hopefully show you all some draft competencies to go over. And then last, I created a lot of workshops this past semester based on the teacher needs assessment that I sent out that we got a lot of feedback from. You know, over three-fourths of our teachers completed it. And so as a reminder, I just wanted to list kind of an overview from January to June. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do the June Bias Boot Camp workshop series just due to the PD days. But I'm going to be rescheduling them for early next semester so we can kind of like kick off with something really great, so. And lastly, I do want to talk about, the highest attendance was for the LGBTQ+ cultural competency with a total of 30 participants between both elementary and middle school and high school sessions. So I think that's really important to highlight as we think about really the interest and the needs of the district when we think about different topics in DIJ. And I know that there was just a lot of interest around that. So I'm glad that the attendance mirrored that. And then unfortunately, the attendance tapered in April with only five participants and then only four attending in May. So I say that because I'm going to go over some of the feedback from all of the evaluation forms that I created. And so just thinking about April and May, I'm basing it off of maybe two people that filled it out. So, and a part of that attendance, many noted or informed me that, you know, attending after-school workshops and programs can just be difficult, and especially when we think about the time period of April and May, you know, sports, folks got to pick up their kids, you know? So I recognize all of those difficulties kind of got in the way for a lot of teachers to attend. And I got many emails that were like, you know, I wish I could come, but I have this. So there's definitely interest. So I don't want the lack of attendance to make it seem like folks aren't invested. So our first one was let's talk about race in the classroom. So our learning outcome average from there was 4.38. And there was definitely some good feedback presented. So one key takeaway was that there's no exact guidebook to follow when talking about race or racism in the classroom. And this teacher is planning on using the strategies they learn when talking about case scenarios in the classroom when issues arise. And then some other folks also said, you know, I'm definitely going to utilize the resources mentioned and, you know, continuing to seek out colleagues who can be thought partners on these issues, right? Speak up and confront issues that arise, et cetera, et cetera. So there was some good feedback addressed. These are a little out of order because the LGBTQ+ cultural competency was actually next. It was in March, but they had their own evaluation feedback, so I'll go over that at the end. So the power of accessibility, the average was five for the learning outcomes. And when asked about elements they enjoyed about the presentation, a teacher noted, you know, personal assessments of learning styles. And we also did a lesson plan workshopping and collaborating. So I have updated some of the materials for the UDL presentation that I'm doing tomorrow for the middle school, and I'm really excited about it. But there's also still going to be some elements from this presentation involved as well, so. Putting in the class and classroom, so this, we were really exploring social class values and impacts on students. The learning outcome average was 3.75 out of 5. I think it's important to note that this is based on only one person completing the survey. So it's not a lot to go off of, but their comment was that they really enjoyed this presentation due to the rich discussions. They also liked the opportunity to learn more about different terms that are not always presented in a way that increases understanding. And I will say, doing the session for the elementary school, it was a really rich discussion, and they were really engaged in all the activities we were doing, so. And then lastly, we have the LGBTQ+ cultural competency training. This was facilitated by an outside organization, so by Seacoast Outright. They work primarily with supporting LGBTQ+ youth. So here's a couple of their questions, and you can see on here, they were pretty satisfied with the training overall. The content was really understandable. I think the biggest piece is, you know, what was their knowledge before the presentation? And the average was 6.8. And then after the presentation, it went up to an 8.5. So I think that's pretty awesome when you think about going in and maybe not knowing a lot of the terms and concepts and coming out and feeling a bit more confident in that. And then overall, the presentation, 43% said it exceeded expectations, and then 38% said it met expectations. So I think overall, it was a really informative training for folks. I do want to note, there was some mixed informal feedback that I got back because, as I said, I wasn't the one giving the evaluation. And so I had met with certain folks or heard certain mixed feedback, and it wasn't really around the content, it was more of the facilitation and maybe not having enough time for certain things or not agreeing with certain viewpoints that were shared. So I do want to note, it was very knowledgeable, but there was some mixed feedback. And then lastly, I just want to give some additional work and acknowledgements because although a bulk of my stuff was these goals, I also have been doing a lot of other things. So my end-of-the-year estimated contact hours, I've met with teachers over 54 times, students over 27 times, and then principal, counselors, or administration kind of being their thought partners on different issues or things over 13 times. their thought partners on different issues or things over 13 times. And then just want to highlight a couple of things, you know, as I've mentioned multiple times here, I helped to co-start the middle school BIPOC student group space and we're really excited to continue that into next year. And I'm also hoping to build a space at the high school. Also, our UNH extension program, which is coming up really soon, our True Leaders and Equity Institute, an extended learning opportunity. So that conference is going to be happening July 10 through the 13th. And then it will be a year-long project for the two selected students. I've also been meeting with ESOL and Dining to discuss what piloting a culturally inclusive food options could look like, particularly at the elementary level, because there's been some concerns or some situations happening. And so we've been meeting to discuss like what that could look like. And then lastly, also working with all the other DIJ directors and a bunch of other partners on a Manchester Teachers residency pilot program. So in regards to the teacher shortage, a lot of folks are thinking about grow your own teachers because, you know, research shows that a lot of teachers come from the space in which they live or have lived. And so thinking about how can we also not only grow our own teachers, but think about it from a person of color sense? So how are we also diversifying our staff and our teachers to reflect the growing diverse body of students? So that's it. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
I'm not suggesting this because it looks like you need more work, but a couple of years ago, Chris Hall did a really great series of year-long teacher research courses where you had the same group that would follow, you know, meet regularly and then produce teacher research. I'm wondering if that might be a model, because then you get a group of committed people who are not just taking in information, but actually working on some kind of project that they would present. So I don't know, it might be worth like seeing what Chris Hall did and see if that, because I think then you get a group of, what I think he did, he's got a committed people. And I'm not sure if he got, they got academic credit or what kind of credit they got for it or...
So that actually continues to this day. They just did a presentation to each other last week and they get credit towards their contact hours. And Suzanne, do they get college credit?
They do not.
They do not? So it's just credit towards their hours on their pay scale?
I just thought it might be worth talking to him, just see what he does and see if there's some, because I think that's been a very powerful model for us and whether that could fit. I mean, it sounds like you have plenty to do, but it sounds like, I think that's been a very, very positive thing for us. So just a suggestion.
Yeah, absolutely. I actually attended the presentations and they were wonderful. So, and I have been connected with some of the teachers and Chris Hall. I actually was trying to participate in the action research group, but unfortunately due to the demands, I wasn't able to continue. But I definitely think that's worth like connecting with and partnering on.
I just want to say a big thank you. You know, we created this position, I know initially, you know, we weren't exactly sure like what direction, you know, this would go in. And I just think it's wonderful, like it really is, I think, everything that we had hoped in terms of all the connections that you've made and the different, you know, with teachers and students and just the community and all of it. So thank you, Rachel.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next, we have superintendent's report.
Thank you Denise. So before I introduce Jen Brown on the communications piece, I did not want to forget two things. One is that the finance committee sent me on a journey to discover whether we could put bleachers in at the new middle school. And we did have enough contingency left in the project so that I contracted Andre Close from Bowen Construction. We have a proposal and so hopefully into the fall, a little bit, probably into September, we'll see bleachers there for people who want to sit on something other than the ground. The ground was very inviting at all the projects, all the musicals that we did. It looked very cool, but if you're a senior looking for a place that you need to be supported, the ground doesn't really cut it. So that came up and I was glad to see that we still had enough money to do bleachers. So there'll be separate bleachers built into the bank. Capacity will be like 400. So if people still want to use their blankets, there's plenty of places to sit on the bank and enjoy the game, but there'll also be bleachers there in the fall. So that was one update I wanted to give you.
Jim?
Yes?
Will there be a way to access the bleachers from the sidewalk going down?
Yeah, so from the parking lot mat, coming down the backside of the fence, that will be all set up as a entry. So it'll be a sidewalk going from the parking lot to the bleachers.
But you won't be able to get to the bleachers from the top of the hill?
No.
Okay, unless you climb down?
Unless you want to climb over the fence, which many people do, but you know, the access will be from the ground level.
And it's also handicap accessible. So that sidewalk, we'll get them there in the first row will be handicap accessible as required.
When we discussed Rachel's position, now over two years ago, the board had lengthy discussions about the title. At the time, the board settled on the title of coordinator. All of Rachel's peers, all three of them, are all called directors. And Rachel is representing us in the state with these three other DEIJ directors. So I would like to change her title from coordinator to director to give it the equivalent status of her peer group in the state. So if I don't have any objections from the board, I'm just going to move forward and do that. Okay, thank you. Now Jen Brown. So we should have a drum roll. Jen and Josh have been working tirelessly behind the scenes all year to do two things. One is create a document for best practices and communications for the district. And to give you background, the district, when we did surveys on communication, we never were slighted on our attempts to communicate. The community was inundated with community, with communications, newsletters, emails, text, you know, voicemails. It was never about quantity. It was about the deluge of different myriad ways people were communicating to the point where if you had a child at the elementary, middle school and high school, you know, that became sort of just a lot of loud noise coming for the district without, you know, any process behind it. Everybody was doing a great job of getting their information out to the parents and the communities. So that's based on the survey that the board had me commissioned through the university. As a result of that, what we also learned is that it's not about quantity, it's about how we're doing the work. And that resulted in the board agreeing to bring on a communications coordinator. And so we hired Jen. And Jen has been doing a fabulous, fabulous job for the district. And when we get to the place of these two presentations tonight, one being best practices, that was actually a goal the board had for the position. And so Jen has been working with administrators and others in the district to put these practices together. And so that's the first presentation. I turn it over to Jen and Josh.
Thank you. Genevieve Brown, communications specialist for the district. Good evening. So best practices, as Dr. Morris provided the background, is a document that has been long in the making. I did some sample research with other districts in the state and out of state. I was unable unfortunately to find a whole lot of literature on the topic. So I think if we have an interest in sharing the knowledge we gain as a district with our peers outside the district, I'm sure we would make a lot of friends. I think we have the first one, that's a comprehensive 27-page document and it covers guidelines and best practices for 16 topics currently from accessibility to mission statements to guidelines for communications, from email communications to telephone, how we communicate with students, with each other. We talk about media releases, photography, et cetera. So I'm offering three professional development training sessions this week. First one was at the high school yesterday. Tomorrow, I am back here at the middle school for staff meeting with the middle school staff. And then I'm doing both elementary in the afternoon tomorrow. That's both Mohairat and Mastway. Now, I cannot possibly keep everyone awake and present 16 topics and do a deep dive. So for this year, we've narrowed down to five. So we're covering accessibility, which is at the core of what we do, confidentiality, email best practices, media releases and photography. The document right now, like I mentioned, is available as a PDF format, 27 pages long. And my intent is to review it annually, keep it fresh and current and offer more training opportunities in the future. Does anyone have any question about the best practices? Yes?
It's not a question. I just want to say, I think it's fantastic. I was reading it, everything, I'm looking forward to see how it develops over the next year, but it's a one-stop shop for a bunch of different questions that people have. It sets expectations for returning calls, emails. It's really great. And so I also wanted to say how great a job you've done since we brought you in. There have been things that I've noticed as a parent, setting expectations from the building or from teachers about how they would communicate, when they would communicate, what you're going to see and then seeing that consistently. So like, I know I'm going to get an email on Friday from Mohairat and I know I'm going to get an email on Sunday from the middle school detailing what's been going on in the past week or what's coming up. I know to look for those things and I know to look for those things every week. And that has been super helpful. And then as we start propagating that down through the teachers as well, when, you know, if they do newsletters or how often they do newsletters, those things are going to be fantastic. So I really appreciate that. It makes my life easier because then I'm not hunting for things. I know where I should be looking for them. So I greatly appreciate that. And then I also wanted to say, the last superintendent's newsletter was very lovely.
Thank you. It is my hope that we can integrate the document in the onboarding process with HR as well. So every new employee would be onboarded with this very specific set of guidelines and expectations for future communications. And that's internal and external communications. All right, let's dive into the website. Dr. Morris mentioned there was an extensive survey done in 2021 and I will glance over the first few slides very quickly. Most of you were here in December when I last presented with Josh, Director of IT, who's right here. And so I just want to bring everyone up to speed. So a very collaborative approach. Amy Sterndahl, who was a communications consultant and who has consulted with us in the last few months as well, digital learning specialist, the leadership team, principals, of course, Josh is Director of IT, but the whole IT team, the superintendent and assistant superintendent. The communication survey made very clear that we had some pain points on the current website, which were confusing organization and navigation, difficulty to find important information such as lunch menus, bus routes, information at the middle school about clubs and student activities. And as far as the school board, the minutes and watching the streaming online. Josh and I work on a very thorough...
Sorry, it's not changing. I'll play with that, you talk.
Okay, I'll do the talking. When you present to the board, you should always bring your Director of IT. So we had plenty of vendor that we considered to do business with to migrate to this new website. We created a rubric of 84 itemized must-have and would-be-nice features for what would be the new website. You'll see consistently here in the green, the vendor who scored the highest in all of the categories, Campus Suite, which is who we went with. And after we signed, they rebranded and changed their name, so now they're called School Now. So when we talk about School Now, it's the vendor for the new website, formerly known as Campus Suite. The timeline of migration and launch, you'll see now, we are launching as predicted in June. Long production period where we revisited not only the templates, but a style guide for the website, completely revamped the architecture, scrubbed the current website, determined which pages would make it to the new website, which information might be stale or needed a little bit of reworking. And we've worked on that in collaboration with all the content owners, which are various department and folks that work for the district from child nutrition, transportation, et With the addition of a communications specialist in the mix, it changes dynamic for work a little bit. So I'm taking on most of the coordinating and website management specifically for the content. And Josh can take a little of a step back. In the past, he was really the contact person for all the website needs. So everything that's not a security, data protection or tech support, then I'm taking over. I am working in collaboration with webpage editors. So we do have staff members who have login and editing permission to some sections of the website and digital learning specialists, which remain a vital component for building specific needs. You'll see on the new website, which Josh will demo for us real soon, we have a centralized calendar, which was a key feature requested by the community. Obviously, it's mobile friendly, very responsive design, it's ADA compliant, the vendor will do a monthly audit for us. So if we do have someone who forget to caption some alt text on a visual asset, upload it to the website, a PDF that might not be compliant, it will be flagged for us and we will have an opportunity to fix it. The search will be limited to our own webpages and not the whole world wide web as it is right now on the website. We will have the ability to search non-image PDF as well. And from the backend of things, the CMS, which is the content management system, it's much more intuitive and easy to learn. We'll have banner and pop-up alerts for emerging situations should we need and want to use that feature in the future. And we'll be able to integrate with social media. Content revision, I will spare you this slide. What you need to know is that it's been very a district-wide effort, very collaborative. The website was made available to digital learning specialists as early as April and everyone with login access at this point have completed their training and are able to either reach out to me for assistance or complete their edits on their own. The fun stuff, we are launching Thursday next week, that's June 29. There's two things you should know. The websites will likely be live as early as Tuesday for some. And so we need to do this in order for all the pages to be indexed by Thursday and everyone to have access to all of those on time. Feedback will be collected via a web form, which I will upload to the landing pages soon. We'll have Google Analytics on all the pages. And lastly, before Josh do the fun stuff and shows the demo, is that the search feature, which is an important component, will not be available for the first two weeks. And so the road crawlers out there for Google, Bing and all the search engines, they do need that two weeks' time to make sure to reference and index all the pages. And so if we were to launch the search feature, as soon as we launch the website, it would appear broken because it would not generate any results. So for this reason, we're withholding them for two weeks.
Bear with me as I switch gears here. All right, good evening, everyone. Josh Holstead, I'm the IT Director for the district. And before I dive into this, I just want to echo what Heather was saying. Having Jen around has been a huge, huge help. She has done, I would say, the majority of the work on the website. We've both been working on it together, but she has been the one meeting with the principals, the tech integrators regularly, the different departments like counseling, athletic, athletics, all of those groups. So I have to agree, I feel like it's... So I have to agree, I feel like it's, having Jen has been just huge for us. And hopefully, the new website just shows, you know, all that work that she's put into this and just a different way of thinking. Right off the bat, we don't have lots of pictures of our buildings. There's actually kids for pictures, which is fantastic to see. So just to kind of orient you real quick, we have some persistent links at the top, some of the more popular things like lunch menus, calendars, and a directory. And then as you scroll down, we do have these pictures that cycle through. And those will change over the course of the year. We also have some more quick links that surfaced in the survey. And we have some upcoming events. And then we have news rotator. And then, once we get to the bottom, we have links to the schools. And so just to kind of jump in a little bit more, one of the things specifically for you guys, since you are the school board, we cleaned up agendas and minutes quite a bit. So it's much simpler. You can just click on it. It surfaces the most recent meeting at the top. I've actually started using the website more frequently to get stuff than going to the one that's live right now because it's so much easier. And so just jumping over to the calendars real quick. So the way this works is it's going to default to this list view. You do have the option to change it to a, you know, more traditional calendar view. But right out of the gate, you can see these different events. And you have short, quick links right here to add it to whatever calendar program you're using if you want to add it to your personal device, your computer. You also have the ability to select different categories. So, you know, if you have a child at Mastway and the middle school, but not the high school, you can select all, some. Right now, we just have this. So if I select all, you'll see quite a few more events pop in there. And so I believe Jen has this populated up through December with the big calendar events. So start of school, holidays, and school board meetings. And if you, if, I'm probably going to pick one that doesn't have a lot of detail. But if you click on it, there are more details in here. I believe the last community dinner had a lot of more details in it because that was a bigger event. And again, you have those quick links to get it to the calendar right there. So, jumping over. Like Jen said, the search isn't live quite yet. Trying to think else. What else did we want to show? I'm blanking on where we left off. I'll show you one of the school sites real quick. Similar layout, we use the same design, but their menu structure is a little bit different, tailored to the families. And then we have some Mastway-specific or school building news here, mixed in with some of the district news. And this is what Jen was talking about, where we can kind of surface some alerts. So if you click on this, it gives the office hours for the summer because they are a little bit different as people are off on vacation and whatnot. And, oh, we'll jump over to the directory. It's pretty basic, search by first name, last name. If you know which building you're in, you can go right to that and surface that. And of course, all of you are on there at the district level because you're on the school board. Let's see.
I have a question as far as...
Yeah, go ahead.
PTOs, how do they have, because I know some of the schools do like PTO newsletters or what have you, and how do they fit into the website?
So if the PTO firmly had a page, we moved it over to this one. So I think Mohermit might be one of those. So this one is an external link to the PTO's website. But yes, that's something we can feature on the website.
Yeah, I don't think we managed their pages for them in the past. I can't remember. I'm pretty sure we just linked to them.
Does anyone have any questions about the website?
I actually have a question this time, but I want to say it looks fantastic. I'm really excited about it. It, as I was reading the communications thing, I caught this. Are we changing, instead of going like mo dot O R C S D dot org, it's now O R C S D dot org slash mo? So all the school pages are going to be flipped? So parents who are used to typing in school dot, that's not going to, will that auto-direct them to the one? Or are they going to get a 404 and then need to switch around?
We will test it and get back to you. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Does the website affect the messaging system? So the, like, the principal sends out a weekly message. Is that a new system also?
Yeah, so that's a completely separate system. So we're still working on getting that set up. We're doing the data validation right now because that syncs directly to Power School. So we're constantly pulling over updated contact info for parents. So that is also going to launch over the summer, but that's going to be a little more scaled back and just trying to do the email messaging for now. So it is a completely separate system. It's called Parent Square, but it has some really nice features. I know, over the years, Denise, you've said that it's been hard. You wish you got some of the school communications as someone who doesn't have a child in the district. And they do have the ability to have community groups so the community can subscribe to different topics, things like that. So that one, we wanted to get the website done first and then get the email portion of Parent Square set up and then take a little bit more time to roll out the rest of it. But yes, that will be changing too. So I know a lot of people have had frustrations with School Messenger. And Parent Square, we're really excited about. The emails are formatted completely different. We can do more newsletter, HTML.
Can offer templates.
Emails, we can template it all. So it goes right in line with Jen's communication style, and it's multimodal. It'll go email, there's an app that goes with it. It has some built-in translation services. So going back to the accessibility piece. So that's the next piece we're working on. But right now, it's on my desk doing the data validation stuff. So that's just been taking a little longer than I'd hoped.
Josh, will that be in front of the board, like, by the second meeting of August, if we're going to launch it for the parents in the fall?
Yeah, we can, we could probably do an update.
Be good to do what we're doing tonight for the board so they know the product. And then when people reach out to them, they can redirect them.
Yep, we can do that.
Is that the same Parent Square that the athletics are using currently?
Yes, athletics was using it first. And so now we're just going to roll it out district-wide. So we're going to, we're going to rework it a little bit, organize it differently than the way it was set up for athletics, but yes.
So they won't have to, and we don't need to dig into it now, but nobody will have to re-download a separate app or anything. It'll just all be part of the same app?
No, it'll be part of the same one. We're just going to redo the athletic groups because the way they, they just got set up a little wonky. So we're doing some best practices from the company, so.
Josh, when, for example, when school gets called off, we used to have that pop-up. Is that still going to happen?
On the website?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. And that's essentially what this is. This is, I can't remember if this is an alert or, we can have it.
This is a banner alert, and you can just click a button, and you'll have the pop-up that you mentioned, and it's a big square. And you have to dismiss it by click.
When you say this, what are you pointing to?
Oh, sorry, I'll use the mouse. So this right here, we can customize it. And what we can do is make this be front and center. So if school is canceled, it'll actually pop up. You have to dismiss it to get to the website. We didn't want to inundate people with the limited summer hours like that. So it just sits across the top as a, kind of just a notice. But we can surface that. And then with the new notification system, it can still do all the other, email, text, phone, all the things.
And our school board meetings, do we still have a direct link? That'll bring people to, be able to watch us?
Yes, yeah. If you go right, if you go to the school board page right there, it's the first thing right on the top. So we have it right there. You can watch the recorded ones, the prior ones too.
The live ones, the live ones and the recorded one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I sprinkled the video quick link on other pages within the school board so you'll have it on the agendas and minutes page, for instance. So people get lost at first. So you'll have the YouTube channel here. They can just tap right here, yep.
Yeah, so we tried to put it in a bunch of different places. But certainly, if, you know, as, I think as we get it live, we're going to obviously get more feedback. And people might say, oh, you know, it makes sense to you, but maybe it's not as obvious to other people. So I'm sure there's going to be changes we're going to have to make. And we're going to find little bits and pieces that need to be updated, so.
Yeah, I just know there's certain people out there that if it's more than two clicks, you've lost them. So, you know, if it's less than two clicks or less, you're good.
Where would they go to submit feedback?
Uh, we...
So we'll create a Microsoft form, and we can have that pop-up banner. Or we can add a block section on the homepage. So I could have it right here between the quick links and the carousel, for instance. Or clickable button saying, "We'd love to hear your feedback. Please share" by clicking here.
This looks fantastic. Thank you both very much for all your work.
Thank you.
One quick follow-up question. You mentioned the search feature coming online later, being able to search PDF. That would include all the policies, correct?
As long as they're not image PDFs. So if you scan a document on a scanner, that's an image. You can't search that.
Do we have it, or can we get a general sense of where we stand with that? Because I think that's going to be one of the most useful features for folks is being able to sort of, at least in general terms, find what they're looking for in our policies, which are pretty extensive.
So if you take a Word document and use the Adobe Acrobat feature to convert to a PDF, then that's a searchable PDF online.
Okay.
I think at this point, because when I first got here in 2012, the majority of the policies were scanned ones. And I think at this point, we've gotten through almost the entirety of the policy manual and updated everything. So I think we're in pretty good shape. But I believe a non-searchable PDF would also get hit on the accessibility scan, and we'd get alerted to that because that wouldn't be an accessible document at that point if it's just an image.
Yeah.
So we'll take a look, we'll spot-check some. And I'll talk to Wendy and see if she can maybe give me a sense of what our oldest policies are that haven't been updated, and we can double-check them. And I'm assuming she's got a copy. If we need to, we could make it work. Because we can also, we have some tools. We can take an image, make it accessible, and rework it so it's nice and clean. But hopefully, we shouldn't get in that spot again with the accessibility checking.
Okay, thank you. And last thing, this is fantastic. I think this is, there's a lot of, you know, over several years, this, the culmination of this being ready to launch soon, I think is a big, it's going to be one of the more impactful changes we've implemented, at least from a public view perception. So I think this is great. You guys have done a great job.
I think it's more aligned with us as a community than the current website. It speaks more to what Oyster River is. I'll do a last shout-out, if you'll allow it. I know it's a big agenda tonight. But I do want to give credit to the digital photography high school students, who I was able to work with, Hedy Hodenshield, who's an art teacher at the high school. And so you'll see the three building photos on the right are students' photos that they took for us this semester. And there's some other Easter eggs that you'll see we give photo credit to, and those are also high school students. Thank you.
Support. The next item up is enrollments. So again, you know, we're closing out the school year in a pretty much where we thought we would be when we first had an enrollment report after kindergarten enrollment. You can see at the two elementary schools, if you look at them side by side, that the K-1, 2 numbers are pretty nice. They're within board policy. When you get to 3 and 4, they're at board policy, but really, really tight. That's not a surprise because we knew that those classes were relatively large compared, comparing to the three previous classes. So the K through 4 numbers still hold to where they were when we first did a presentation with a few more in the kindergarten than we had at that point. So over the course of the summer, you know, we'll have move-outs and move-ins. And generally speaking, we end up with a net gain. Sometimes, in the past, it's been significant. Other times in the past, it hasn't been significant. We won't know until, you know, we actually do our official enrollment account in October. This will come back to you in August if there's any significant change that needs to be addressed. But for right now, both principals are comfortable with the K through 2 numbers and are not uncomfortable with 3, 4, but just watching them. Any questions related to K-4? The next piece is related to the middle school. And, you know, this is, this also is within the prediction of where we thought we would be. The middle school numbers are going to be a little bit lower next year than the current year, but that's anticipated based on our incoming fourth grade. And then the board wanted an explanation of where we were in terms of the three-person team. So Suzanne, Philippone, and Jay, and Bill have been working with Cara Dolmage, Sarah O'Brien, and Diana Pelletier related to the three-person team. They are pretty excited with the solution they came up with, which would be more project-based and oriented. You can see they're going to share the math component in that grade. And then each of them will pick up a, another content area, whether it's reading, writing, or with science and social studies, alternating from quarter to quarter. The two-person teams really aren't experiencing any structural change. But I included in this who's teaching the two-person teams just for your information. So Erin Bobo-Karin and Emily Burke will be a team. Bernadette Labby and Carolyn Hurd will be a team. Yes?
As far as the alternating by quarters, social studies and science, is that something new or is that something that they have been doing?
They've been, thank you for that, Denise. They have been doing that consistently. They, at fifth grade, spend the majority of their time on the math and reading skills, writing, that kind of thing. Fifth grade being a transition from fourth grade to sixth grade. It's sort of a blending of a self-contained classroom and a team-oriented approach. So as fifth-grade teachers, as an expectation from administration, we still spend a lot of time on reading and writing and math to prepare them for the team concept in the upcoming school year. So alternating social studies and science is pretty typical for that grade level.
For the existing two-person teams, are we, the way it's listed here, I'm not... The way it's listed here is different than I remember it being last year with the two-person team. One teacher taught math, the other taught ELA, and then both alternated social studies and science. The way it's written here is both teach math, one teaches ELA, and then the other does the alternating social studies and science. Is that correct?
It is a slight change, part of what's going on. Suzanne and the staff have spent a lot of time, K through 5, in terms of training for the next iteration of our math program. And we felt it was important that all the fifth-grade teachers have, have that skill set as well. Because when you get to bobcat time and kids are needing help, we need teachers who can help them in math across the board. And so the approach this year was for the fifth-grade teachers to be trained in math so that either they're teaching it directly or they're supporting it in bobcat time. Anything you want to add to that, Suzanne?
Eureka has a lot of specific types of language. And the curriculum itself is focused around a lot of that language and process in learning math. And the fifth-grade teams, to get that training and to implement, we really felt like would be beneficial for the kids. In looking at our STAR scores and other scores for fifth grade, we felt like math was an area that the kids could benefit from some additional support. And so we're going to, this year, we have the opportunity to train everybody because we're going through this process. So the determination was made that this would be a good year to give everybody that training, have them learn those skills, be able to work with kids. And then if need be, we can change it next year. But it would give, it would give supports to kids that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do that.
Is that going to put a hardship on any of the teachers? Like, ELA versus science and social studies?
So, we've met with the teams. We've talked to them about it. They, there are a lot of opportunities. Jay has made a lot of the professional development funding available to faculty over the summertime. And there are, a, a lot of the teachers in the 5th grade will be working in the summertime to make sure that they're feeling comfortable. And we'll continue. We have a variety of different strategies that we're putting in place for the 5th grade team and for the teachers throughout the school year. So, we're utilizing Ellen and Sarah, who are math interventionists and, um, supports over at the elementary schools to come over and work with 5th grade. Ruth is also who, it works at the high schools, an interventionist. She's also getting trained as well. We're hoping that the teachers can work with them. And then also, I will be working with fac, with the 5th grade faculty on a regular basis. We're going to try to do some time once a month, if not, um, once every few months, depending on what we have for time and the time of the year, um, to be able to sit together and to go through what they need for curriculum and time and, and development and support. So, we have a, we have a pretty good, you know, we've worked with them to create some strategies and support so that they could make sure that they feel like they're able to do this. And they know, they can, I know with, um, Jay leaving, I've made it perfectly clear to them that, you know, Bill will be here and he's very familiar with that. And I'm happy to help also, if I can help them.
And then, uh, finally, thank you Suzanne. Finally, the high school enrollment, we're seeing just a slight increase. And, uh, that also was anticipated. So, one of the things that I would just point out, just for, um, trivia reasons, is Barrington coming in is pretty consistent with where Barrington was in 10th grade and 12th grade. The interesting piece is that this is an incredibly small class of, um, incoming, uh, current 8th graders in Barrington. And we still maintained a very significant enrollment from the class. We continue to be a very popular option for Barrington parents. You know, Tom and I can go all the way back to the beginning of this. And, you know, when we first started working together 11 years ago, there was someplace around a, uh, two dozen Barrington kids in the district. And now, we're at 180. So, that's a direct result of the negotiated agreement with the town of Barrington. But more importantly, now that we have eight years behind us, it's, it's showing that the Barrington parents really want Oyster River as, as an option. So, I think it's been a very successful arrangement in terms of, uh, meeting student needs. And in terms of budget, it's probably brought in, uh, $3.5 million and, you know, this, into our current budget process. And so, that's, uh, pretty significant. And that means that money wasn't raised by Lee Madbury and, and Durham. So, I think it's a win-win. It's been a very successful, uh, relationship. The students who, uh, come into the high school are welcomed and transitioned into the high school. One of the ongoing questions I ask in senior seminar to Barrington kids who are there is, you know, how long did it take you to transition into the high school? And they usually say about the first quarter. You know, they're getting to know people. And then, by the time they're seniors, they're just integrated into our community, just as Lee, Madbury, and Durham are integrated into our community as students. Meaning that the high school doesn't tend to separate by town. Certainly, friendships continue, but, uh, the integration into athletics and music and clubs is really complete, uh, by the time, uh, they enter their sophomore year. So, a very, very successful arrangement for Oyster River and for Barrington. Questions on enrollment?
Jim, what's the, um, max per class for Barrington? Was it 50?
Yes. And you can see that we've never quite hit 50.
So, we have room if somebody moved in?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, that happens to us every year. Most recently, I got an email from Superintendent Ray, and we had, she has a sophomore at one of the two other high schools who is asking to transfer to us in their junior year. So, that happens every year where the children make different decisions. It's pretty rare for anybody from Barrington who's enrolled here to want to go to Dover or Cole Brown. It's pretty common for us to get upperclassmen, um, as we go through the years. All right, thank you. And then, just, um, you know, in terms of hiring, we just are at that place where, um, it's time to just, if, affirm the hiring of, um, staff that I've, uh, interviewed and offered, uh, positions to at the high school. Oliver Philbrick for computer science at the high school, again. Jacqueline Casey for special education. And at the middle school, Shannon Keyes for English Language Arts. I just point out that Jacqueline Casey was a real find. Catherine reached out to, um, her and to see if she was interested. And we're very fortunate to be able to bring her into the district. And she's, um, leaving Exeter to be working with us. So, kind of a nice, nice, uh, find.
So, you'd like a motion?
Yes, please.
Tom?
Um, I'll make a motion to affirm the hiring of Oliver Philbrick, Jacqueline Casey, and Shannon Keyes.
Brian? Any discussion? Yes, Heather?
It's Keyes, Shannon Keyes.
Thank you.
Keyes?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's spelled correctly. It's just pronounced Keyes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all in favor? Seven in favor.
Thank you. That ends my report, Madam Chair.
Business Administrator Sue, you are up. One more time.
Good evening. I have an update on the FY '23 budget, although this is not the last update, my last update. One thing that we have still ongoing is payroll. We're struggling through the last few payrolls here. So, you'll see all those numbers and encumbrances. And, um, hoping that once those are released, that number on the bottom will be a little larger. I do know that in terms of revenues, we will have additional 300-plus in revenues. One of those is, um, the incentive from EverSource. That's 146,000. That's the incentive. We got half last year. If we prove to be successful with the middle school, we'll get the other half. I signed that paperwork a couple of days ago, so hopefully, the check's in the mail. Interest was very good this year. An additional, like, 40,000 in interest, which is unusual. I think we had 8,000 last year. And the bond interest will come over, and that's about 50,000. So, that brings the balance with some additional, um, tuition, a couple of little extras here and there, about 300-plus for revenue. So, all in all, um, looks like we'll meet the mark for obligation to taxpayers without, um, accessing much of the retained fund balance. The other good news is the state budget, when it passed, it increased adequacy. So, that'll give each town a little more inadequacy. So, things are, so far, looking okay. Questions?
Well, thank you very, very much. And, uh, we wish you well.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. This is bittersweet for me.
Bittersweet for all of us. So, would you like to bring Amy up to the podium-
Oh, sure.
And do a official transfer of-
Positions. Transfer the baton.
She's going to need the revenue sheet.
There you go. It's all yours. I'll still be around to help out with-
Oh, yes.
The transition. But, you know, it's, it's a pleasure to have Amy. She knows her stuff and she'll fit right in my shoes.
Oh, I don't know if I'll fit right in her shoes. She's a, she's a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best.
So, Amy and, and Sue have been working together for probably a good six weeks at this point. Amy comes into the district once a week and works with Sue and is getting a handle on, um, our day-to-day operations. She's met all of our, our people in the office. She's been well-received. And, uh, she's been working with the finance committee along with Sue right along these last couple of meetings. And so, um, welcome aboard, Amy.
I, for one, can vouch for Amy. I've known her for several years now, and she's top-notch. So, you're getting, you're getting a pretty good one. But I will absolutely miss Sue when she's gone. Sue's been a good friend of mine. She's helped me out when I'm in jam. She's answered all my questions. And as I said before, I'm a business administrator because of Sue. And she has done so much for this industry, uh, for women, uh, in this position, um, that you just, there's just nothing you can say or do to really thank her for what she's done, especially for this district. But, um, it's been an honor to work with you, Sue. We are going to miss you in retirement.
And next, we do not have a student rec report. Finance Committee.
I actually had to be reminded by Tom that we did meet a couple of weeks ago. This whole June has been such a blur. Jim already discussed, uh, the bleachers. We did talk about that, so I won't bother you with repeating that. We did talk about, um, sports and how we're going to be discussing that in the next, um, next meeting. It's probably going to be a topic that'll come in front of the board in the fall, as far as, um, you know, field usage and everything like that. I think you'd be surprised when you see how the field uses is tracked and who's using it for what. That was actually pretty eye-opening. Uh, we did talk about some new positions that are possibly coming down the pike. Nothing's been put on paper yet, so I don't want to bother anybody with tomorrow's problems. Uh, we'll see that during the budget process. Uh, and then, we spent a lot of time talking about bottled water. I know we talked about that a couple of years ago. Tom brought it up as he remembered it from, uh, when we were there before. But, um, as the same situation exists where, although, you know, keeping with the sustainability idea that we, you know, want to kind of get rid of bottled water, it is a huge source of revenue for our food service, um, you know, department. And, uh, it's, if we go down that road, it's going to be a very, very tough decision because the financial and the sustainability has to kind of balance each other out. And right now, I don't think it does with the amount of money they bring in. But, um, it is another topic you'll see coming down the pike that we'll probably bring to the board level at some point. I don't know how much, uh, when that'll happen. Because right now, that's probably, sports is probably taking more of a, a higher priority. But, um, I think pretty much that's, that's pretty much it. We won't meet again until the end of August, so you won't hear from us until, uh, September. And then, obviously, then we'll start the budget process. And we'll, we'll go there. And we'll be meeting pretty much every other week, probably after that. So, until we get a budget, hopefully, the first meeting in December. That's, that's our goal again this year.
Thank you. Nothing on unanimous consent, so, uh, strategic plan report out.
So, I'm going to invite Suzanne to the podium. We have done two previous report outs on the strategic plan. The first one, setting the stage for the year, a mid, a middle-year report. And then, as we've done with the DEIJ tonight and communications, this is our end-of-the-year report on the strategic plan. Suzanne?
There's a lot of information in here. I'm not going to go through every bit of it. What I would like to just point out a few areas and to answer any questions that you might have, um, about the information shared. So, in looking at, it, it jumps from district curriculum to district IT and then back to curriculum by, by the school, um, in each school building. So, in looking at district curriculum in 2019, 2020, um, the conversation had started around creating leadership positions in content areas to help move some of the curriculum work forward. Since we've returned from the pandemic, we've found that we really need to resettle before we start that again. So, the, over the past few years, I've spent time working with departments to figure out where they are and where their work is going. And as that progresses, those district positions may, may resurface. We have one in mathematics, um, currently for, for grades 6 through 12. And perhaps we'll, we will decide that it's necessary in other content areas. But that's sort of been put on pause right now. World Language, we, we came forward earlier in the year as the committee and proposed, uh, the FLEX model, which is the exploratory model. And that has some budgetary implications. And so, moving, we don't have anything moving forward unless the school board would like us to continue looking at that. The IT, um, I, I, Josh could speak to this definitely more than I can. But we've gone through the whole process of one-to-one, grades 5 through 12. We're going to actually change the way we do the replacement, which Josh has spoken about, uh, and what that rotation will look like as, as computers come in and go out. So, that is, and focusing on grades 1, 5, and 9. So, we'll, we'll continue to have those conversations. Moving down to sort of the infrastructure pieces, where we are continually looking at replacing desktop computers in classrooms and making sure the server storage array is, um, replaced as needed. And that will continue into next year also. Looking at the best, and then the SAU systems and software, that area really relates to website, communications, internal documents, which you've, you've heard about, um, already this evening. I'm not going to repeat that. Going into that each curriculum area, there's different places. Each building is in a different place with competency work. So, the high school really is working on aligning their standards and competencies internally. They review them regularly. They look at it. They've been looking at, um, competencies for vision of a graduate or as they relate to vision of a graduate. And they've been having conversations around different models of hybrid grading and just really exploring that. Because again, a lot of that work was paused. And so, there hasn't really been any, there hasn't been any changes or any suggestions for changes at this point. They're just really continuing to learn. And they're in that phase of, of just becoming educated around options and, as well as looking at their competencies. Middle school's in the same part of the process, re-examining competencies, re-examining assessments, just looking at the curriculum that they're, um, utilizing. The, uh, middle school is at a point where calibration is really important. We started to do some of that work. And so, what that looks like is having conversations about what does meets mean? And how does that look? And what does it look like in your classroom? And what does it look like in this other classroom? And, um, what does succeeds look like? So, there, so those conversations are, are continuing. They started this year and they'll, they'll continue into next year. And then, the elementary, we had to shift a little bit. We, um, originally, it started with professional development and writing, um, writing competencies in ELA and math. And we shifted that over to science competencies and professional development around, around competency-based education. Because one of the things that we, that I realized is that there needs to be a more understanding and awareness of what it means to design curriculum through competencies at the elementary level. So, we're really focusing on that. We focused on that this year. We had a group of teachers, including David and Misty as well, participate in some professional development around just the basics of competency-based education and writing curriculum. So, we're kind, we're, we're learning, I'm learning more about where people are, how to meet them where they are and, and help them, um, gain the information and knowledge that they need and the skills they need. So, that's pretty much it for curriculum. The outcomes, we're still working on those outcomes. We're just maybe getting there a little bit differently than we thought because of the pause of the pandemic. So, the outcomes haven't changed. We, we continue to work on those. It just might look a little different year to year. For school nutrition, again, Doris would, Sue can jump in if there's, um, anything I'm missing. But Doris really, she's the one that worked on this, just like Josh worked on his section, um, with IT. And she talked a lot about the installation of middle school systems, um, kitchen managers at the high school becoming certified. There's a lot of training involved. So, she, again, she's w, working towards the five-year outcome of training staff in nutrition, culinary, and kitchen operations and, and making sure the equipment is upgraded and, and appropriate. And those, again, those, the five-year outcomes, they remain the same. Looking at sustainability, I'm, I'm excited about the work that the district has done with sustainability this year. For the education piece, the teacher coordinators have done a great job. They came and presented to you, so you get an opportunity to hear from them directly. And we'll continue to work on the, the five-year outcome to promote an understanding, um, of sustainability practices and to help prepare students for college and careers. And as far as the operations is concerned, I mean, I think this building speaks to a lot of the operations, but we continue to, continue to work on that and operationalize the report that was done. Restorative justice is something that is connect, oh, I think I missed an area. So, DEI, DEIJ work, equitable, inclusive school, climate developing with staff, that, again, the outcome is the same. How we're getting there may, may be, a lo, may look a little different in hiring Rachel and hiring this position. It really has changed the nature of the work. And Rachel talked a little bit about that, too. too. The way we were doing work before is going to look different now, now that we have this person on staff that can help us. And restorative justice is something that we continue to develop and grow. We've gone through our handbooks, athletic and student handbooks. Last summer, we did that with leadership. We went through and made some edits and some changes. We continue to do some professional development. We have a lot of faculty and leadership that have been doing ongoing online professional development with the International Institute of Restorative Practices. And so that, that will likely continue into next year. I think we had about 20, 20-ish people go through that training from K, K through 12. So we'll, we will continue to make, make gains towards that, to reach that goal. The bus fleet, I'm going to move on to transportation. We're going to continue to research the electric and hybrid van replacement, which I know has already been talked about and addressed, so, so that work will continue. And then we have ongoing bus safety programming. We were always going to be doing that. We're always going to be working with, with the elementary schools, middle school and high school around bus safety. SEL, MTSS, SEL, mental health goals. You've heard from a variety of Shannon, Kim, Felicia this year. So again, I'm not going to go into great detail about it, but we are the big thing that we're going to be working on now. We've discovered this year through, through continuous reviewing our process and where we are with MTSS, we need to bring the district team back together again, which it's been, it's been a few years since the district team has come together. So we've been working with, Jim and I have been working with the leadership team around MTSS and bringing that district team back together again to review where are we with our MTSS system, both academic and behavioral, and where do we need to, where do we need to grow to support our students? And that's the same for all of the middle school, academic and behavioral, elementary, academic and behavioral, and high academic and behavioral. We need to really reassess where we are, get an understanding of who our students are, and continue to implement programming that's supportive of the kids and their needs, such as open circle, caring school community, and programs like that. And, and working with counseling today was a, and yesterday has been, has been great. We've had a lot of great conversations about, about some of this as well. And then the building, the, the new middle school building, there's nothing, I mean, we have some, some pieces that we're adding, but there, as far as the goals are concerned, it says by June 2023, students will have programming that meets their needs and a new facility. So we'll continue to work towards that goal as well. Does anyone, that was very quick. I know it was like a brush stroke through all of the strategic plan, but I'm wondering if anybody has any questions.
Suzanne, I just had a question about the competency grading in the high school.
Sure.
According to this plan, which you say it may be, the timing may be different, but we'd, you'd be implementing a, a grading system in the fall of 2024, which would really be about 14 months from now. Is that still the timeline?
So I would need to talk to Becca a little bit more about it. I think that timeline keeps changing and evolving. It depends on where, how, where the faculty get, right? So they're at a point now where they're talking about a dual system. So the dual system, and, and I think Becca needs to be here for that part of the conversation. I could, we could have a greater conversation around that at another point, but they're talking about doing a dual system, so you wouldn't remove the system that we currently have. You would just be adding another layer of competencies to that system.
Tom, we'll, we'll be bringing that in front of the board for a conversation in, in this upcoming school year. Because this, you're right, it's 14 months, but we also extended the plan by a year. And I would want Principal Noe to be able to, you know, flesh out her ideas for you all to, to consider, but what Suzanne just said is accurate. It would be a dual system, but you should see what it would look like or what she's thinking about with the faculty. So we'll make sure that's an agenda item for the next school year.
Part of the reason I raise it is because I think that the high school grading system is a very delicate, political, you know, very sensitive change, any change of that grading system. And so if you're going to have a dual system, how do the two sys, two parts combine? And I just think it's going to, you know, I, I think there's maybe less sensitivity to grading at some of the other levels, but I think at the high school, there's extraordinary sensitivity. And I remember back, maybe 12 years ago, they made what I thought was a fairly minor change in the GPA, and it became hugely controversial. So I think, just my sense is that in terms of this planning, there really needs to be a lot of outreach to the community so that they know kind of how this thing is perceived, what a transcript looks like. There's going to be a lot of stuff that has to be communicated. So just as you build out the timeline of that, this is a very sensitive thing, I think.
Yep.
You're absolutely right, Tom. This is, we, we are well aware of how delicate this particular process would be, and we want to make sure that we reassure parents and students that nothing's lost in the translation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
The school board resolution. I know Gianna and Tom have been, have worked on a proposal.
Right, so I know that multiple things went out to everybody. One was that Tom and I met on Friday, and we had a pretty good discussion about what to do regarding what the original plan was to have kind of two separate resolutions. One was addressing the 306 regulations, and then one was what was formerly known as 2021's HB2. So the thing I sent out a letter, I think, got to everybody was that we decided to scrap the idea of addressing the 306 regulations, because the big thing that we were concerned about was the ELOs. But the recent iterations on that kind of addressed our concerns. The learning everywhere is still a little iffy, and that's something we can keep on watching over time to see kind of how that rolls out and whether or not we would, as a board, consider it to be robust and how much it would affect us in particular. So what we decided to do was to look back at the HB2, which got turned into statute RSA 354A, it was 31 through 34. And I'm assuming that, I know it got out a little late. Did everybody get the, the rationale, the proposed resolution that we wrote up and had a chance to look at it?
I sent it out to the board.
Yes, just wanted to make sure. I know it was late, so I know that people didn't necessarily have a chance to read it. We tried to be very careful with the language. The original language was actually produced by Tom a couple of years ago, and we sat down and tidied it up and made it so it was more particular towards the school board association as opposed to us as our individual school district. The biggest thing is, is that in January 2021, the NHSBA did actually address it slightly by making a broad statement under their own policy that was 6F, that NHSBA supports equity inclusion in all aspects of education. And then it basically quotes what that RSA actually had regarding discriminated, possibly discriminated classes. But it doesn't address the fact that it's the paragraph 34, which is the thing that's of concern where teachers essentially can have a civil suit brought against them very easily by anyone, and in such a way that bypasses the school district itself. And we thought that was a pretty big violation of local control and is probably the, at the root of what I would consider to be a chilling effect on the ability to teach and allow students to explore these concepts. So does everybody have any edits or objections to the rationale of the proposed resolution?
Gianna, do you mind if I read it into the record out loud?
Yeah, I could do that too.
You can do that if you wish, just so that the community knows what the resolution is.
Absolutely. I will go ahead and read it, so it's on me, unless, Tom, you wanted to read it? Okay. So the first thing you have to have, the, the NHSBA requires a rationale for them to be able to, to approve or, well, to recommend or to not to recommend the proposed resolution. So this is the rationale. In 2021, HB2 is signed into law as RSA 354-A, paragraph 3134. Described as an anti-discrimination bill, it included a number of prohibitions for teachers with potentially severe penalties for violations. Due to lack of clarity in the law, a fact was issued by the Department, the New Hampshire Department of Education, the Commission for Human Rights, and the Department of Justice. Nothing in the clarification or the law contradicts NHSBA's policies regarding equity inclusion, NHSBA 6F. However, we are concerned that the prospect of civil suits and disciplinary sanctions from the state has already had a chilling effect on efforts to create inclusive curricula, which honestly address issues of bias and race. These civil suits and sanctions, as outlined in RSA 354-A, 34, circumvent local school board policies that already exist to address parental concerns regarding curricular content. This is again, an erosion of local control that we find concerning. So proposed resolution is the NHSBA opposes any policy affecting curriculum that enables parents or guardians to circumvent already extant local school board review policies and exposes teachers to civil suits and sanctions at the state level. See, may I have any questions? We, Tom and I spent a lot of time, both together and individually, looking this stuff up. So if you have, include going back to references of what all the RSA is linked meant. So if you have any questions, I actually might be able to answer them.
So Gianna and Tom, just a question. Do you think that after you say enables parents or guardians or individuals from circumventing? Because I don't think that it has to be a parent or guardian.
It does not.
So.
So that is a good edit. I agree. So it'd be parents, guardians, or individuals? Because the form that is available on the website certainly looks like anybody can do it.
Anybody.
And they don't need, they don't need a lot to go on. If you go and look at the form, that's, that's, that's available. It's, I found the form concerning, to say the least.
And I had the same question, and I also wondered, and I'm not familiar with how it's written, but does, are organizations allowed to act in this way? Or is it, is it restricted to individuals?
That is a good question. I don't think it speaks to organizations, but when you say that out loud, Dan, it makes me think about the department itself, you know? But I think we would cover that by individuals. So yeah, I don't know that, that it's, I don't think like, you know, a group that's anti-public school could actually, well, I suppose that's not true. I think you are right, Dan. Now that I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the very first complaint we got was from a group, an organized group that was anti-public school, and I had to address it. So yeah, I think you're absolutely right. Not only they think about it.
So maybe in addition to adding individuals, add.
Organizations.
Or organizations. And I think, Gianna, what you'll find, assuming, you know, we take action on this and move it forward, is that the, the delegates might also have interesting suggestions. And, you know, I think one of our objectives is to give Gianna a clear sense of what our purpose is so that she can in a meaningful way participate in that discussion as well. In my time as a delegate, I, I think there were some pretty positive changes made to resolutions that passed the delegates' assembly. So just, you know, think of, be thinking of ways to give Gianna that direction, I guess is what I'm saying.
So do, so what we, would we need a motion to bring this forward?
Yes, definitely. Stand by for a second here. I actually might, Tom, you had found that form. I know you sent it to me. Are you able to pull it up?
Yeah, I do have the, I have, there may be multiple, I think, Jim, there may be multiple ways in which you could make a complaint, but the one I pulled up was the, to the New Hampshire Commission for Human Rights. And for that one, it says, it says students named parent or guardian names. It seems to me that comes from a parent or guardian if you're going to the, the commission. So, but I think, I think if you want to be inclusive, you know, you know, so enables parents, guardians, organizations, or other individuals to, that would, that would cover it, and then, you know, there'd hardly be anything left out there. So I would be, that would be fine, I think, as an amendment.
So I'll move that the board adopt the proposed resolution with the additions of individuals or organizations, as we've discussed, for Gianna to be formally entered to the school board association for the upcoming delegates' assembly.
Heather?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question. It's just informational for me. Is, if we're saying exposes teachers to civil suits, are the administrators also exposed?
Well, the intent of HB2 was to curtail instruction in the classroom. The, the role of administrators, if it's a complaint that is entered, I am, as a superintendent, obligated to investigate that complaint. If I didn't investigate that complaint, then a complaint could be registered against me by the department for not doing my job. But there's no action other than if I was inactive in doing that. So it's really about what's happening in the classroom.
All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Seven in favor. Thank you, Gianna and Tom. And next, we have our list of policies. I'm going to turn it over to Dan, who is our chair of our policy committee.
Thank you, Denise. So, policy committee met on Thursday, June 8th. I was selected chair. It was a real throwdown. Okay, relatively minor changes. These policies were just up for regular review. So we have policy CHCA, approval of handbooks and directives, policy CHD, administration in policy absence, and CM, annual report. So going to CHCA first. The substantive changes really reflect what our actual practice is. Some of this is a result of us not being as focused on printing hard copy handbooks anymore, still wanting to preserve the practice of the board being briefed of any, a summary of any changes being made each year prior to publishing. But publishing, for the most part at this point, is being done electronically. I believe there was one exception at one of our schools. Is it middle school? I don't remember. Anyway, any questions on that? Middle school. Meaning there is still a practice of publishing a hard copy at the middle school. Okay, moving on, CHD, administration in policy, in policy absence. This effectively gives the superintendent the ability to take action on issues that are not explicitly spelled out in policy, something that our superintendent routinely needs to do. I believe in the first change, second paragraph, his/her was changed to their. Am I correct? Do you, okay, so there should be a their to act, but their decisions shall be. So that'd be one amendment I would make to this. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on, policy CM, the annual report. This one was probably the most substantive change we made in that the way the policy was written, there was a sort of a prescribed practice of recommending changes once the annual report is issued. Our board's practice has been a lot more comprehensive than that. We tend to work on that through the strategic plan, maybe in the superintendent's review. So there's, there's not sort of a specific moment at which the board recommends changes to the annual report. So that was, that was basically struck out because it seemed too prescriptive to us. Any questions on that? Okay, so I'll move policies, CHCA, approval of handbooks and directives, CHD, administration in policy absence, and CM, annual report for first read.
Is there a second? Matt? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor. Thank you, Dan. School board committee updates. Do we have any other committees that met? Now in summertime, so I No, in summertime, so I know it's a little bit, a little bit on the slower side. Um, then we have public comments. Are there any members of the public? I do not see any. Closing actions. So our July meeting, um, we are going to start with a regular school board meeting, just so that if we do have business, um, that we need to tend to. But most of it will be our meeting with N E S D E C to talk about superintendent. Um, and then our, and we don't have our August meetings on here, but then we'll have our two regular meetings in August. So we already did our non-public. Um, any, any other things that I'm forgetting? Think we're good? All right, then, given that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Heather?
I motion to adjourn.
Second? Tom? All right, all in favor? And seven in favor, and we are adjourned. Have a good month, everybody.